Should have my gavel here, I guess. Welcome to the Ogden City Council meeting on May 5th, 2020. Happy Single Day MIO to everyone. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present. Still checking, if that's true. Yes, I see everybody present on the Zoom meeting. We are excited tonight to be doing a recognition for the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I believe that Councilmember Stevens is reading that. Oh Doug, you're on mute, I'm so sorry.
Someone do that.
There you go.
Am I, am I ready?
You're on.
Anyway, I was mentioning, years ago, I worked with Takwadonabi there at ZCMI. And she was really a great individual. She, her desire was to serve and to help those who came into that establishment. But it's a pleasure to read this. Declaring May 2020 Asian American and Pacific Island Heritage Month in Ogden City. Whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have shaped our nation's history and are prominent members of our society. In Ogden, they have enriched our community through their knowledge and talents. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Island Heritage Month began as a 10-day observance in 1977. In 1992, Congress extended it to a month-long celebration. The month of May was chosen to celebrate the arrival of the first Japanese immigrants to the United States on May 7th, 1843. And the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10th, 1869. The majority of the railroad workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islanders had played their major role in the growth and development of Ogden. Their influence and contributions to our community and culture are invaluable. Whereas today, we honor the legacy of the Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. The Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is an opportunity for our community to celebrate their history, traditions, and culture. We are forever grateful for their contributions and lasting impact in our community. Now therefore, the Ogden City Council and Mayor Michael P. Caldwell hereby proclaim May 2020 Asian American and Pacific Island Heritage Month in Ogden City. We recognize the profound influence of the Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders and acknowledge the importance of their contributions throughout the greater Ogden community. We express our sincere appreciation to Weber State University Center for Multicultural Excellence and the Asian Student Involvement Association, the Ohana Association, and all others working to highlight and celebrate the diversity within our community. Passed and adopted the 5th May of May 2020. And I, and I, as to, uh, to actually adopt this recognition that we had this, today.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, Doug. Councilmember Stevens, so there's a motion by Councilmember Stevens and a second by Councilmember White to adopt the proclamation, and this is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry Angela, I didn't get mine mute off.
That's okay, thank you, as long as you're not opposing, okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, and normally we would do a big clap for you and shake your hands in the council chambers. But today, we have this electronic means by which we want to celebrate this occasion. So I welcome Lulu Famu Watu Peters, who is the Multicultural Retention Counselor at Weber State's Center for Multicultural Excellence. And I see you have a couple guests as well, would you like to introduce them?
Absolutely, I hope that technology will be my friend today because I've been having issues via Zoom with other students. Grateful for this opportunity to be invited to accept this proclamation on behalf of Asian American and Pacific Islander community members. Also recognizing that we do not represent or are the voices of Asian American and Pacific Islanders in its entirety, but grateful that we can represent them in this capacity at this appointed day and time to receive this proclamation. I did invite our president for Asian Student Involvement Association, Christian Pomsivon, and our president for the Ohana Association, Finau Tatioli, who are current students within organizations and will be continuing this next academic year. And if it's okay, I've invited them to kind of share some of their thoughts. So we'll start with Christian and then Finau.
Absolutely.
Hi, everyone, my name is Christian Pomsivon. This is my, I guess, ongoing, this is my third year as president of the Asian Student Association at Weber State University, but I also am involved with OCA, their Utah chapter, which is an Asian American and Pacific Islander advocacy group within the state of Utah. And thank you all for inviting us and allowing us to be a part of this and be a part of the community. I know that the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad and the incoming of the first Japanese immigrant is very much recognized. But I would also like to recognize that the first immigrants of Southeast Asian descent, of Filipino immigrants back in the 1763, I believe, are some more community members, or I guess, people of Asian descent are still here and present ever since back then. And for this process to be ongoing and for the city to recognize the month of May as Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a great opportunity for us as a community and students and families, especially in the time that we're going through right now with everything. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Finau Tatioli. I'm the president for the Ohana Association at Weber State. I am two years at Weber State now, but this is my first year as president. And I was vice president last year, so it was really good being able to work with Lulu as well as my other peers of the Ohana Association and those at Weber State. But on behalf of those of the Ohana Association, we just want to thank you all for this proclamation and for everything that you guys have done for us at Weber State as well. And just the opportunity that we have as Christian and Lulu shared, just be a part of this community. And for the opportunity that we just have, just to be able to receive this proclamation really. And we hope that we can just continue on what we have so far and just be able to bring more laughter and fun and happy moments for the city of Ogden. And just, we're just really grateful for this proclamation and just thank you very much, really.
Thank you, thank you all so much for coming. I just also just want to acknowledge that the council and the Diversity Commission at Ogden City and the administration all were involved in a really thoughtful and impactful conversation last week during our work session with the Utah Multicultural Affairs Office. And really delved into the, you know, kind of the challenging subject of xenophobia right now, especially around the COVID-19 pandemic. And so we just want to make sure to say that we are planning to pass a joint proclamation about how we really stand with your community and that those kinds of acts or things are not okay in our community. So just want to make sure to acknowledge that and make sure you're aware that we understand that it's an especially challenging time when people are already facing a lot of trauma around pandemic and just lots of other kinds of challenges economically, et cetera, that, you know, this would be an additional burden of your community to face is not okay in our eyes. So thank you again so much for coming. Any other council members want to make a comment, I guess I should ask? Thank you again so much for coming, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, everybody. Great, thank you. So now we'll move on to the approval of minutes. First, we have the regular meeting of January 21st, 2020, and that is Councilmember Stevens.
Yes Chair, there Greg.
Thank you, and the special meeting of February 11th, 2020, that's Councilmember Hire.
Chair Chaburka, I have reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate to the best of my recollection and make a motion that we approve these minutes reviewed today.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hire and a second by Councilmember Nadolski to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So now, we invite Greg Montgomery to give us a proposed events, the fence depot reuse DDR zone building height. And just as a reminder, there's no action for this item tonight. There is public input that's scheduled for May 12th, 2020, which we're just trying to make sure that we do presentations in a timely way so people are able to give comments through the written format and then be prepared for the public input. Thank you Greg for joining us.
No problem, as mentioned, with the situation we're doing now, the intent of this is, well, it's similar to the work session last week is to give people an opportunity to see what the proposal is so they can comment on it. Brandon, do you have that PowerPoint?
We're gonna share it.
Yeah, let me pull it up real quick.
So while that's being pulled up, the intent of this proposed ordinance amendment came from the Boier Company. As you know, they are our partners out at BDO. And as they get clientele to occupy various areas of BDO, one of the things that takes place is they know a lot of the market needs, a lot of things are taking place. And over the years, as they've been filling the spaces out at BDO, we've had to make some amendments from time to time to adjust for some market trends. And so that's what this request is tonight, is to look at changing the height limitation that's in the DDR zone. And next slide. The area we're talking about is not all of the DDR though. It is the northeast quadrant that is being bounded by 400 North or North Street and Depot Drive. Railroad tracks serve as the east boundary and the fairgrounds serve as the north boundary. Next slide. Presently, in the ordinance, the DDR zone or defense depot reuse has a 50-foot height limit. Originally, when the ordinance was created, it was a 40-foot and was amended a few years ago because of technology and...
Did we lose Greg? I don't hear him any longer.
I was gonna wonder.
I don't either, I don't either.
Think we're all still here.
Yeah, I thought it was me for sure.
Well, it looks like he's muted. Greg, are you still there? Yes, now we can, we lost you for a few minutes, I apologize.
Yeah, and we lost the PowerPoint, well, I'll just go ahead and talk about it. So with this new tenant and their needs, oh, there we go back, okay.
Getting it back together.
There we go, next slide. The proposed change is to look at a height of 90 feet in this northeast quadrant. And the proposed ordinance change would amend that language only for that location. The rest of the DDR zone will still stay at 50 feet. That's important to understand because the neighbors that are to the west that are in the DDR zone, the nature center to the south, even the other MRD zone at BDO, would still have the same expectations where many of the existing warehouse buildings are. This area we're talking about, the amendment, is the newer area that had been vacant for many, many years. And the buildings that are going into this area are much larger buildings than many of the old warehouse areas. Next slide. So this gives you an idea of those larger buildings that have occupied this quadrant and also the neighboring properties, the old warehouses. We talked about last time, the railroad is that east boundary, it's the 100-foot wide area. And then to the east of that is Harrisville. And in their plans, this is mainly an agricultural wetland area because of the drainage patterns and the railroad acting as a dam that blocks water from moving, other than one small location underneath the railroad. And so future development in that area is probably very minimal. And the height of the buildings with 100-foot buffer by the railroad creates enough of an area that you don't see any real impacts to other uses. You'll see a physical building, but it's, again, it doesn't cast shadows or anything else on the other properties because that buffer between it and the railroad creates. Next slide. So as the planning commission considered this, they, again, looked at those factors of the manufacturing needs that are taking place, the surrounding properties, the fact that Boier made a very conscious effort as they looked at this tenant to try to steer them in this direction. They could have gone in the MRD zone, which had no height limit, but would have been close to the nature center. And they directed the tenant more towards this area where we could do some special things to protect our neighbors and still allow issues to take place. And this also will, again, allow that growth to take place, the employment, the general needs, and continue to make BDO successful. So the planning commission, next slide. In their recommendation, had a 90 recommendation for approval of this proposed ordinance change of that quadrant area that I described earlier.
Greg, I did have a question from a constituent that asked a little bit more about, just in general, you know, they understand this one building needing to be that height, but why we would go ahead and change the whole area? And I think I kind of know the answer, but it might be helpful if you tell us your thoughts on that.
So we looked at the quadrant area being defined by the circulation patterns, those main streets that will have the traffic, and we kept it all outside of those main streets, meaning Depot Drive and 400. The other, the other circulation patterns that exist in that northeast quadrant will not have through traffic in those areas. And so it limits the need for additional infrastructure. It limits the impacts to other businesses that may be in the area because this is very localized and not as the rest of the DDR zone crosshatched by a grid pattern, even though it's a large grid pattern. And so because it's more isolated, we felt that's where the best location would be for this and not change the entire DDR zone. And also, again, as I mentioned, the homes to the west in Marriott Sladeville along 1200 West, we didn't want to have them impacted by this, nor those properties that are along 12th Street.
Great, thank you.
I have a question, Chair.
Please.
Those structures that will be built, are they being built indoors, inside the building?
They'll be enclosed in that structure.
Okay, so nothing, no amusement park rides will be built outside, is that...
That's my understanding of the project.
If they do or did and they become taller than 90 feet, would that violate the ordinance even though it isn't a building?
It's still a structure, yeah, it'll still be over. We define a building as a structure, a structure is anything attached to the ground, so.
Okay, just wanted to know what the definitions were, thank you.
Any other questions for Greg? Vice Chair Blair, I think you've done mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, Greg, I have a question. And I'm not opposed to adjusting the height limit, I was just wondering, these people will be renting or leasing this building, correct?
Right, like many of the buildings out of BDO.
Do you know what, do you know how long or what the normal, how the normal length of those leases are?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't know if Tom knows, has some ideas on that, or...
I just wondered, because we're, I mean, we're going through to make changes out there, I just wondered what, how long we're requiring them.
They're typically 20-year leases, but I don't know in this case if that's true, we'll check for you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and then I guess the follow-up question to that would be, you know, is it a use or a building that will have multiple uses if that's not the only tenant that's in there? So. Can, is there another tenant that could actually use that building? So maybe that's the second follow-up question to that.
Yeah, there may be portions of that building, the tower may have other, there may be other uses that maybe some process is taking place that requires a tower to it. But the majority of the building would still have other reuse possibilities because not all can be 90-foot tall.
The building could be mezzanine, so, because it's got enough height if there's a secondary use that doesn't make something like that. But there's, we oftentimes have requests for tall buildings and we normally can't respond to them because we just don't know where to put them. So this is a little bit different, but in the worst case, they could mezzanine the building and basically have two tiers and do other processes in there.
Any other questions? Never seen any, thank you so much for your presentation, Greg.
Okay.
Now, we're gonna be getting a presentation from Mayor Caldwell for the proposed fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget. And Janine, I don't know if you want to preface this just a little bit?
I'm not sure I need to, I think.
I said it all. Sorry. Well, I guess first I just want to thank the mayor and administration so much for considering the strategic plan initiatives that were brought back to the council and the administration for consideration from that big circle process we did recently. And then also just recognize how much work and effort has probably been put into kind of reworking some of this due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And just really appreciate all of the efforts the administration has put forward on that.
Chair Chaburka, I really appreciate that comment. It has been a Herculean effort in the last two months. So I also want to recognize Councilmember Hire, he's got Elmani up. You taking a victory lap because you're dropping 15, 20-foot pots last time we played together there?
No. Missing four-foot pots, Mayor.
Yeah, well, that was me, you were dropping long ones. But I just do want to say it's nice to see you all. And this is an awkward conversation to have. This has been the most unique two months I think any of us have ever lived through. And to take all the work that was done in November, December, January, with all of our budget retreats and everything else, and then to have that whole thing collapse two months ago, I really want to thank our team and everybody that's been so involved in retooling everything and putting this together. I mentioned this last week, I'll mention it as we move forward. This is an extremely conservative budget and I think it's going to require a lot of flexibility and nimbleness from all of us to take care of our people, which is our number one priority, but then also to take care of advantages and opportunities as they come. We've got some slides in here that will drill into that a little bit further. But first, I want to start with a "We Pull Together" video that, this was a cool opportunity. We got to the top of the muni building as those F-35s flew over the roof of our building and then all the hospitals did a fly-around in the state. And I thought it was awesomely representative of how people have come together through this. And we have a little YouTube video that we wanted to start this with because we've got a lot of bad news. But as John Krasinski has shown, good news works and is important as well. So we just want to put this together and kind of set the theme as we move forward.
We as a city, county, and state are a very resilient people. When we come together around a common goal, we can accomplish anything. Thank you for your patience and diligence during this time. And please know that your safety is our number one priority.
Together, we can continue at the support and education of our youth. We appreciate the diligence of our students, our families, and our community.
Together, we continue to provide the highest level of public safety and well-being. We know that you've adapted your habits at home to help us stay safe.
You can be confident that when you need us most, we will answer the call.
Together, we will continue to help you live the healthiest life possible.
We are dedicated to keeping this community safe.
We know you're here for us.
And we want you to know we are here for you.
Together, we continue to practice social distancing, meeting in groups of less than 10, and frequent handwashing and other measures that keep our families and neighbors safe. We are strong and our community will persevere because in Ogden and all across Weber and Morgan Counties, we pull together.
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 You're muted, Mayor.
I think that's representative of how we're gonna have to approach this next budget year. And on that note, I'm gonna put on some hand sanitizer to follow our own guidelines. But we've really appreciated the community as we've been able to work with McCady and our 911 dispatch and all of our first responders and everyone else. This has been, like I've mentioned, an unprecedented period for all of us. So I think that's a good way as we move forward. So I want to give, start with a quick quote from Dr. Fuji. You don't make the timeline, the virus makes the timeline. I think we've all had a volume of different information. One of the things that's been frustrating for us as we try to plan for a lot of this stuff is, well, you hear one week can change the next and then change the next. And as he said, unless we get the virus under control, the real recovery economically is not gonna happen. So what you do, if you jump the gun and go into a situation where you have a big spike, you're gonna set yourself back, and we don't want to do that, obviously. I don't think anybody wants to see that happen. So those are some of the guidelines we're working from on this. I like this quote from Madali Gawknar, who a lot of you know is Associate Dean and David Echols School of Business at the University of Utah and Director of the Kemsie Gardner Policy Institute. How much worse will this get? In 42 days, Utah wiped out nearly all of the jobs that our nation-leading economy created in the past three years. More job losses will follow, but I expect in 2020 will be the high, April in 2020 will be the high point for job losses with each subsequent month tapering down. So hopefully, we're coming to the end of that. Rather than a letter to the alphabet, I expect the COVID-19 recovery to be a titled checkmark recovery. Make a checkmark on a piece of paper, then tilt it forward on the long end. It includes a rapid fall, the short part of the check, followed by a steady but slow economic climb up the other side. Utah's economy will recover, but it will take time, perhaps two years. How can we minimize this economic harm? The answer depends on modern medicine, adherence to public health measures, business innovation, and skillful policy leadership. Until residents develop herd immunity or vaccine treatment is developed, Utah... Until residents develop herd immunity or vaccine treatment is developed, Utah faces the likely reality of an economy with stops and starts. As waves of new cases rise and fall. And I know some of you were involved in the healthcare industry. I want to just take a personal. Privilege and call out my little brother who just spent the last two and a half weeks in New York as part of the IHC team that went to go give relief. Uh, in New York and we had a zoom call with him on Monday as he was in quarantine at home and talked about how. Absolutely real. Some of these challenges are in places like New York and I appreciate all those healthcare people that are willing to. Get out there and really be on the front lines of this. We can't appreciate their efforts enough. So, uh, the forward looking economic outlook, um, is grim and you're going to see way more red numbers than I've seen in my. Uh, nine budgets here and my almost twelve years at the county. US employment claims total three point eight unemployment claims total three point eight million, about three hundred thousand more than predicted. Pushing the six week total above thirty million. That implies a jobless rate of around twenty two percent, the worst since the Great Depression. And more than twice the ten percent peak reached in two thousand and nine, which is, you all can recall was a really brutal. Time for all of us. Um, we haven't typically put this out in the past because we've had, as you can see from twenty twelve to twenty twenty. We had a pretty decent consumer confidence index. And in April of that month, it took an enormous nosedive, something we haven't seen in a long time. In February, the consumer. Confidence index was one oh one. In April, it was seventy one point eight, the lowest level since two thousand and eleven. So it's been a historic decline and that's something we're trying to work around and, and figure out as we move forward. Want to talk to you a little bit about the recent efforts. Uh, I want to. Frame this by saying this is in addition to all of the normal daily tasks. And everyone has been really extremely busy trying to keep the city business functioning and, and moving forward. Um, so I want to give a huge props to all of those people that work for the city. We've got really dedicated employees and they've done an amazing job. Through this crazy stressful and, and unique time, but. Um, public safety did a countywide food drive. All cities were collaborating in the county Ogden City Business Loans. We had donations of. Three hundred and ten thousand dollars from local businesses. We've done thirty five business loans to the tune of two hundred and sixty eight thousand, two hundred and four dollars. We've been working on the census, which is going on right now. Um, we've had some conversations with. Uh, state and federal leadership about is this the appropriate time to be doing the census? Some people think. Yes, because everybody is in an opportunity to stay at home or, or figure that out and others are saying. Now we're in survival mode. We need to give this a little bit more time, but we've been working hard with the census partnership. Ogden City opened a daycare facility. For all of our public safety officials as schools closed, a lot of people in the nine one one center. With our police and fire and just with our city, we're at a loss as to what to do with their children as schools were closed. And so we opened a. An emergency daycare facility that has had great reviews. We've gone to virtual meetings, uh, this being indicative of that. And I can't speak for you all, but I am tired of Zoom and can't wait to get back to regular meetings. Um. We've been providing senior lunches, averaging twenty five to thirty a day. We have a, created a work from home plan. And we've also done a return to congregate plan where people come back to the office and we've given them. Um, PPEs so they can clean their workstations, uh, opportunities to work so that they feel safe being back in the. City buildings and interacting with the public. Uh, we've done regular updates with that. Uh, we've done regular updates to the community. We've done daily PIO calls with not just the county, but with the school districts. Both Weber and Ogden with the nine one one district, with the health department, everyone else. And so as we get. New information, we're able to push that down the line and, and figure out how to disseminate that the best. We've done daily calls with the league of cities and towns. Um, there are two hundred and forty nine cities in the state of Utah and. All of us are in the same position as we talk about what to do about special events and public gatherings and things that have been. Things we've done and, and relied on for, you know, in some cases eighty to a hundred years in our communities. It's a disconcerting time for everyone there. Um, weekly calls with the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services. Uh, substantial changes to the budget, which we'll get into and you guys will see as we go into this in the next couple of weeks and you get a chance to talk to all of our department directors. Eight thirty every single morning, we have a daily COVID morning meeting where we talk about what we know, what we don't know, what we need to be planning for. Do we have enough PPEs? What do we need to be ordering? Um, we have a huge reduction in expenditures and then IT improvements so that people can work from home and, and find ways to do that safely. So this is a quick budget comparison. As you see our general fund, what you adopted in, uh, twenty twenty fiscal year twenty twenty. Was sixty four million, three hundred and change, and we've looked at a change in that to the tune of a, a reduction of four million dollars. You can look through those other numbers. A couple of things we want to point out. Uh, there are a couple of big numbers in there in terms of the redevelopment agency and the building authority. Um, uh, we redid the bonds at the Linquist Field, which is a big part of the building authority and the redevelopment agency as we pull a BDO. Off of the RDA, that is a huge net. That's why you see such a spike there. And so you see a five point two nine percent reduction in the total municipal budget. Which is, uh, you know, to the tune of ten million, seven hundred and forty one thousand dollars, which is a, you know, I, I've talked a lot about. The fact that we worked really hard over the last eight years collectively to. Put us in a position to do the compensation survey and a number of other things that we've been waiting on and. Now I'm not going to lie and say it's not heartbreaking to have this happen, something totally out of your control. And, uh, that, that's a big hit to everybody, but they've all weathered it and, and we will, we'll get through it. This is the, one of the starkest things I've seen in my years of doing budgeting. Uh, I've never seen so many. Numbers in the red as you run down the whole list. Um, it's a, you know, property tax is the only revenue category increasing, um, due to the expiration of BDO, uh, the RDA area. Um, and the cities recognize a portion, a portion of that tax revenue in the general fund. But I, I think we'll talk about every one of these line items as we go through the next weeks and how we forecasted. And planned for a lot of these losses. Um, that being said, as I mentioned, the Utah League of Cities and Towns meets with the Tax Commission. Three days a week to try and talk through forecasts and everybody is at a loss for how this is all going to work out. We don't get the numbers for what happened in March until the end of the month and that was when we hit the big drop. And so. This is what we've, uh, we surveyed forty three different cities and towns along the Wasatch Front. And took all of their information and then, and. Put compiled all of that information to come up with some of these projections and, and forecasts. So I think our team did a great job and. Getting what information was out there and making sure we're ready to respond to that and give conservative estimates. These are obviously. Very conservative. We hope we come out a little bit better than. These numbers predict, but if they don't, then we're prepared to, to weather that for the next little while. To scrub the palate from that ugly graph we had on the last one, uh, just in the last year, we had a couple of things that I think are indicative of how we might. Be better positioned than a lot of other cities to come through this. Uh, most charitable city in the nation, search cities, one of the top ten search cities. Best places for business and careers and Forbes, one of the coolest towns in America, fifty great places for early retirement. Uh, there was a joke made earlier that after the last two months where we all like that we still live here, we might be, uh, willing to go into early retirement. Because this has been a brutal couple of months and then the best places for a STEM career. So Ogden City has done a great job in the last number of years as, in terms of positioning itself. To take advantage of things and opportunities as they come. Um, I think we're better positioned in terms of the diversity of our economy. And what's going on and the people we have around here to take advantage of it as it starts to open up and people start to think about where they want to live and raise a family and. Start a business or, or relocate. Um, we've talked a lot about the state of Utah being one of the most diverse economies in the entire country. Which will allow us as a state to come through this and Ogden City is one of the most diverse. Economies in the state of Utah in terms of manufacturing and all the different things that we do. We're not relying on just one industry. And those industries that we are, we do have a lot of reliability on such as Hill Air Force Base and some others are very stable and we don't. Forecast anything happening with that. So. In terms of, you know. This depression and what we're seeing, there are some reasons for optimism in terms of our community in particular. All that being said, we have a lot going on still. Um, we have regular meetings with our development partners and I wanted to talk about some of the things that we had. Accomplished in the last year. Um, we have a lot of redevelopment project area plans. We've done a couple of community plans, the Southeast Ogden Community Plan, the East Central Community Plan. Other, uh, planning efforts include the Bus Rapid Transit Project, which we've heard, uh, is still. They're still really optimistic about that. They had hoped to start in October. We don't know with this next, uh, fourth. Uh, the, the fourth economic stimulus bill, we're hearing a lot of that will be transportation oriented. That might move it up. We don't know yet. We don't have enough information. About that, but UTA was predicting that we'd start construction of that in October of this year. Our transportation master plan, parks and recreation master plan, airport master plan, which you heard a lot about earlier today. And the make Ogden plan, which I saw a lot of you participate in. So we did a lot of outreach efforts. In the course of the last year and we had a lot of different comments. So we've appreciated all of the effort that went into that. I know that's very important to you guys. It's very important to us too. It's our community at the end of the day and I think it's critical that we bring the community in to have ownership and what's happening down there. Want to talk a little bit about the current projects that we have and I would say that none of these have. Necessarily been stalled. Every indication we've had from people that we've talked with have said that they're still moving forward. It's not like in two thousand. Better. You have two thousand and eight when the financial markets dried up and there was no funding for anything anymore. They're looking to give loans. They're looking to give money out. Uh, the make Ogden updated downtown master plan. A lot, I know a lot of you participated in that. Ogden Business Exchange, we just had a big opening this week with, uh, the Ogden Zone and the hand sanitizing and everything that they've done is. Created a new business plan for them. Rite Aid, a lot's happening up in that area, the Thorstensen Building. Union Station Electric Alley, the airport, the Wonder Block, Nine Rails Creative District and the Arts Plaza. We've got a lot of funding already lined up and in place for those projects. We expect to see those continue. And I think they'll make big differences. The picture you see there on the right is a, a brand new hotel going up, uh, right downtown right now, which. We hope is open and, and functional when this all settles down and, and people look to start traveling again. We did a lot in the last year in terms of business recruitment, expansion and gardening. Um, some of the recruitment projects are the Cash Valley Bank. If you don't know, that's the. Old first security building. They were hoping to start construction of that and, and Q three of this year. We don't know if that's changed or not, but that'll be a great iconic building in our downtown to get redone. Um. We've toured the, the Cash Valley Bank renovations they've done in Logan and other areas. We think it's going to be a great addition. Right in the heart of our downtown with one of our iconic buildings. A lot of these other recruitment, uh, projects have come through already. Want you to know that our recruitment pipeline is full, seventy seven new projects that they're working on. We've been working really hard on that. Retention and expansion projects. Amer Sports did a, almost a three hundred thousand square foot new building. I think that's unique and the state was very, um, excited about that because when the Outdoor Retailer Show left. Salt Lake City Arc Tarex was one of the biggest, um. Groups in the Amer portfolio that said, we don't ever want to come back to Utah. We don't like their politics. We don't like what's going on there and for them to. Um, bring in a whole bunch of their employees and that business model from British Columbia is, is indicative of the way that we've. Pushed forward and, and had our messaging. I think that's been well received in the outdoor industry. Enable Utah. If you haven't been down to the, the Stockyard area, the Business Exchange area, that's a big. Amazingly huge building down there. Ogden Zone, as I mentioned, just opened Set Point and, and Trust Brands. Um, retention and expansion initiatives, roundtable discussions with outdoor products and IT software industries. We do those on a monthly basis. We try to. Have conversations with what's happening, what the trends are, how can we help you? What do we need to do to, to be competitive and to make you successful, to give you opportunities to continue to grow and expand? And then we do outreach to aerospace and advanced material industries with Hiller Force Base Industry Day. Utah UAS Summit and UAMI, which is the Utah Advanced Materials and Manufacturing Initiative. And we've got a very robust group of industry leaders. In that area that could talk about our supply chain and what we can do to keep people employed and to keep them going. And then I think what's, uh, an important thing for me personally, uh, especially as we've seen the last two months. Gardening and small business support. We had eight small businesses funded through the BIC lump programs. And sixty two of those funded businesses were minority business enterprises, either women or minority owned businesses, which. We're really proud of and I think that's a, a part of our ecosystem. To talk a little bit about the COVID nineteen business response, Ogden City is working to support and assist impacted businesses. Um, I had a really unique. Uh, event happened just, uh, I think it was a, a week and a half after this all came together. Um, uh, the Slado Pickens, the, the president of Arno Construction went downtown to get some curbside. Lunch and said, my guy was horrified at what I saw and how dead everything seemed downtown and I'm. Terrified that these businesses might end up closing or anything else. And he said, I want to be. A founding contributor and give a hundred thousand dollars to start off a loan program for a lot of these small businesses. And, uh, we thought that was amazingly generous and indicative of what's happened in Ogden. Um, we also had Wadman come in with a hundred thousand, OIDC came in with a hundred thousand and then the others made up the other, um. Dollar amount that you can see there for the emergency loan program. I don't know of any other community that had business leaders step out and say, we want, we, we've been successful here and we want to continue to help. Support those local businesses. So our business development staff contacted A plus of the businesses to assess needs and provide support. Fifty of them completed a survey on the impacts of COVID nineteen. We've had a bunch of virtual roundtables. Um, regular COVID nineteen updates have been sent to the city's business license email list. And this emergency loan fund, um, was, it was, it was really heartening for me to see our business community and those that are still busy and successful, reaching down to give. Hand ups to the rest of the people that were really struggling. And so we've doubled down on that and spent a lot of time working through. All of those local businesses and we've appreciated their support. Our Business Information Center staff received and reviewed forty seven applications. And thirty four of them have been funded for a total amount of two hundred and sixty five thousand and change. But again. If I just have you look at those, the founding contributor and the lead contributors and the others that stepped up in a big way. To say, we're here, we want to support you. We want you to be a part of our community. I, again, I'm not aware of any other community that had business leaders step out and say, let's do an emergency loan fund for small business. So. I want to give a huge thank you to that and I thought that was, uh, uh, amazing that those people came out and did that. I thought that our, uh, business response to this was amazing. Um, I've seen, uh. You know, groups like Steve Conlon and Ogden's Own Distillery, Distillery and Wasatch Pharmacy Care. Producing hand sanitizer. Um, they donated a lot of that to the city and to first responders. I've seen Ogden Zone on all kinds of news stories about how they completely retooled what they were doing when they realized. There was a lack of hand sanitizer and it was being bought out, but they could create that and the way that they did that was, was pretty amazing. I know. Steve has kind of the thousand yard stare when he talks about the two weeks it took to retool all their production facilities and I drove by. One on the Saturday that they started putting that out and I bet they had three hundred people in line in front of their little store. That they'd allow three or four people in and I was amazed, but I think he said they've done over fifty thousand gallons of hand sanitizer and they're get, giving it to grocery stores. To hospitals, to everybody. They've done an amazing job doing that, turning on a dime to. Meet the needs of the community. White Cloud pivoted to begin printing three D face mask shields. Um, Coleman Knitting Mills is selling surgical masks and gowns with the help of laser cutter donated by Auto Leave. Ogden Signs and Graphics and Ogden Blue are producing protective barriers, signage and modular walls and tents. And yes, we all know, and I think many of us have visited. Many restaurants and retail businesses have shifted to offer curbside pickup on ordering, online ordering, et cetera. Um, I know somebody mentioned earlier that they're getting a Sonora Grill and, and celebration of Cinco de Mayo tonight. We all appreciate that. Um, and. And that is just some, those are just some of the stories. There are a lot more out there in terms of what our business community's done. And, and I think they've been very flexible and we've really appreciated that. One of the questions we've had a lot is what's happening with our public safety. Want to give a huge props to our police department in terms of what's happened with crime reduction. I'm going to talk just about crime reduction over the last four years. Obviously, 2018 was an outlier on that. And then 2017 to 2019, a 25.3% reduction in Part One crime in our community is an amazing statistic. I'm not aware of any community that is doing something like that. I think they came together and created an effective strategic plan. The ATAC, they're the, the RTCC is, as most of you know it, it's the Area Tactical Analysis Center now. As Chief Watt has renamed it, has been a model in the nation. We get tours all the time about what they're doing and how they're integrating technology and proactive policing to not require as many officers, badge officers, post-certified officers on the ground. They can do a lot of the predictive analysis and, and chase the problems instead of just passively policing. They've done a phenomenal job of that. And then we've really appreciated the Project Safe Neighborhoods partnership with the federal government and the Utah Attorney, the Utah Attorney, well, I can't remember what it is, I won't try to make that up. But when you look at the Project Safe Neighborhoods, it's, it's looked to tackle the most frequent offenders. If you know the 80/20 principle, 20% of the people produce 80% of the results. It's kind of the same in crime. So they go after criminals. And if you look at that, it's resulted in 23 defendants sentenced to a lot of time in federal prison. But on the bottom of that, 144 firearms seized, 480 pounds of meth seized and 5.1 pounds of heroin seized. These guys have done an amazing job of putting all of that together. And I cannot thank them enough for what's happened. That used to be one of the big hitches in Ogden is that it was not a safe place to live and there was a lot of crime and we weren't proactive enough in chasing that. When you look at these statistics, I think it speaks different to that. Our police department has done a phenomenal job with the resources you've given them to work as smart as they can to address a lot of these issues. Not to say that we don't have more to do there, but they have done a lot in, and I, I think a relatively short period of time. One of the things we've done that I think helps stabilize our calls for service with emergency services and, and our police department is to really focus on housing in neighborhoods. You can see some of those before and after pictures are pretty amazing. On the talk since 2012, Ogden City has accomplished 110 homes renovated and sold, all load of moderate income. Eighty-four new infill homes built and sold, 15 properties restored to single family owner occupied use, 51 blighted units removed. A couple of the key projects were the Oakden Bungalows, Lincoln Cottages and New Bridge Elementary. That's what we've done collectively just as a city. But when you look at the, the ripples that roll out from that, when you get these newer homes and, and families in and people take more pride in their neighborhoods and are willing to invest more, that's immeasurable in terms of how that's impacted our East Central area and a lot of these focus areas. So we've, we'll continue to focus on the housing in our neighborhoods. Present efforts, you'll see in front of you. I think we're more aggressive than most communities in terms of fiscal year 20. Funds dedicated to housing were $8.8 million. If you look at that, 2.6 million from HUD, 2.7 from our Synchronicity Bank Line and credit line and loan, 3.5 from the city, Quality Neighborhoods and the RDA. The present and future focus is to continue to create a balance of housing types, all income levels and households in all neighborhoods. The key projects, you've seen Stonehill Homes, we have 12 sold, six underway. Interesting enough, interestingly enough, when we opened that with the model, we had 50 people say that we're very interested in that and we're on the list. We sell them as they're completed. So we've sold 12, have six new under the, underway. The New Bridge area, we had 11 homes renovated and next up we'll have 550 24th Street. There's been a lot of conversation about housing affordability. So Ogden City projects of the 8.8 million dedicated to housing in fiscal year 19, 61% was for low to moderate income housing. And since, as we mentioned, in 2012, Ogden has renovated and sold 110 homes for low to moderate income housing. It's a priority for us. We want people to be in homes. We are looking to move people out of rental situations. And then you can look through the low, low to moderate income housing citywide. I think it's really important that people have an accurate view of that. I think there's been a lot of conversation that we're not doing much and don't care about that. I think as you look at those numbers in terms of the units and the targeted income groups that, that take advantage of that, we're doing a lot for that. And I would argue that we're doing more than anybody else in Weaver County by a long shot. So one of the things that I think breaks a lot of our hearts, we've been really successful in the last number of years in our arts culture and events categories. You know, I know Twilight's been one of the most successful outdoor concert venues in the entire state. I get people from Salt Lake all the time ask, how did you guys do this? What are you doing? It's amazing. And I think at one point we had close to 60% of the people that came in to visit those concerts had out of county zip codes because we can track that. So we're all heartbroken that this enormous effort we have put into building our arts culture and events here kind of died immediately in the last couple of months. And so many people put so much time into this, but a lot of great things have happened because they continue to believe in what they're doing. As we've talked about before, these are passion driven groups. They don't do it because they want to make a lot of money. They want to bring people together and be creative and, and help support each other. And they're still doing a great job of that. We're continuing to bring art and culture to the community using, using social media tools and Zoom. As I mentioned earlier, Zoom's not my favorite format. I'd much rather be giving high fives to friends and shaking hands, but we're doing what we can with that. I've been impressed with what our group has done and what they've put together to continue bringing people together. Continue working with so many of our community partners to bring unique programming in in new ways. You look at the Connect Project, Owen Arts Live Events, Virtual Five Days of Cinco de Mayo, Ogden Chairs Art, Virtual First Friday Art Stroll, our Facebook Live, Virtual Art Classes. A lot of people are doing a lot of great things. And I've seen some amazing videos and other messaging that's gone out to help stand people up and help them feel hope and the excitement about what's going on in our arts community. Can't thank our team enough and all of the people in our community that has been supportive of that and, and really reaching out and giving people reasons to find hope and, and continue doing what they're doing. We don't expect this to disappear at all for us. One of the things that I kind of looked at earlier that I really appreciate when you look at that support downtown bingo, bingo, I want to give a challenge to all of the city council members. I looked through all of those 25 squares. I've, I've done 18 of them. I have seven more for a bingo blackout, but we'll send you the list of all of those that, that support downtown Ogden Bingo. I think it's a great idea that everybody's come up with. And it's a great way to kind of get out and get out of your comfort zone and, and really just appreciate everything that we're doing. So in terms of what we're doing here, we've, the business supported events partnered with Visit Ogden and Downtown Ogden Alliance and efforts to support local business. Want to give a huge shout out to Kristin McBride and some others. When this happened and they closed in-store dining, we talked about it at 7:00 AM and by 10:00 AM, they had all of those curbside service stall signs out and banners out in front of all of those local businesses that were providing curbside service. They turned that around in just a couple of hours. That's, I know our family's taking advantage of that, but we've appreciated their quick reaction to a lot of that. We continue to manage and update these as local and state levels of service change. Mentioned earlier, we have a PIO phone call every day and we meet every morning at 8:30 to talk through that. Event supported efforts, we hold weekly meetings with the Health Department, Weaver County, Visit Ogden, ODA, and we'll continue working toward the safer turn of community event programming. And we continue to work with event organizers to educate them on the current status of events in relation to state and local guidelines. I mentioned earlier, we had a conference call with the Pioneer Days Foundation earlier. We're going to have one of those weekly as more information becomes available. They haven't made a decision yet on that, but as more information becomes available, we'll continue to make those decisions with the health of the community top of mind. Couple of transportation updates as they relate to the budget. I've mentioned earlier, the BRT, they're still working on that. There's some uncertainty in terms of when the federal government's going to release some of that money. We're working through that. UTA has over 60% of the planning done for that already. I think that's really important. That's something that's been a passion project of mine. I think it'll change the way people move and, and circulate through our community from the downtown to the university and hospital for many, many decades to come. I think it's critical and, and we're continuing to work on that. Sidewalk improvements, I know have been very important to a lot of you. Just for the record, we have $740,000 in fiscal year 21 programmed for sidewalk improvements. And then you have 20th Street Polk and the Polk Sidewalk as that new school comes online and 26th Street are a couple of the big projects there. A couple of the major transportation timeline estimates, as you see there, 20th Street is under construction right now. I don't know if you've been through and, and seen that, it's completely torn up. That used to be enormously crowned. And so I think it's certainly difficult for the people that live there, but once that comes online and the end of September, they're going to be real happy with that. And that'll last a long time. We've also put a lot of infrastructure in the ground as part of that project. 26th Street, we expect to start that towards the end of this year. BRT, they were hoping to start in September. We've pushed that now to October on UTA's estimations. We still hope that they will start this year or at least we'll have the funding commitments and we're all lined up in terms of what we have to provide in terms of local matches and planning and land donations and everything else. So right now we're just waiting for the, the federal funding green light on that. And then you see the timelines there for 23rd and, and 25th Street, which will be in fiscal year 2022. The CIP list you see in front of you is a lot different than it was when we had our three day retreat in January. You can see the public art funding. One of the ways we prioritize this is a lot of the projects you'll see on there, we have matching grant money. So when you look at Ramp Awards, that took a 50% match to put some of these things together. So we felt they were critical that we kept on the CIP list because we didn't want to lose those matching dollars. When you look at the project titles, all of these have been greatly reduced. And we've certainly heard your wishes and wants for the community in terms of the Marshall White Center improvements and the center redesign. We, that was one of the only things we kept on the list as we moved forward because we've certainly heard everybody and, and your requests as we look at that. And then you can see what we have in terms of monies funded with BNC or Prop One monies as we go through the, some of that infrastructure work. And one of the slides we wanted to put out there was the work that we've done in sidewalk improvements. It's, it's a little bit of an up and down, but we're averaging in the tune of about $600,000 a year in sidewalk improvements. When I came, I think that was closer to 150 to 180,000 dollars a year. So a lot more has been put into sidewalk improvements. We've, we've heard the community and heard you all in terms of that being a priority as we move forward. So we're excited we're still able to continue that. You can see what our budget recommendations are as you look at 2020 and 2021. That'll continue to be a priority for us as we move forward. As I mentioned earlier, one of the priorities we have as a city is what we've tried to do every single year as we've done our budget is take care of our employees first. We think they're the biggest asset that we have and we want to take care of them as, to the tune of however we can. Cause it is one of the number one priorities. So we're recommending an increase to the number of full-time employees by a net of six positions. But of those six positions that are being added, one budget neutral and five are grant funded. So we're not asking for a lot of additional money to take care of that. We have two positions being reclassified. One position is being retitled, which will have no budget impact. As we've gone through with all of our department directors and talked about the budget and the restrictions we have, everybody was, for the most part, they understood exactly where the city was at this time. And they've appreciated that you've all supported 4% or raises over the last eight years. And they feel like we can take, we can tighten our belt a little bit, appreciate what we have. And we feel like the city council and the administration have been very supportive of city employees. And we felt it was really important that we do everything that we can for them. Of that, we want to just give you a little breakdown on that. We're not recommending any eliminations at all, so no reductions in force. Four of those officer positions or four of those grant positions are police officer positions. We have one police audit and inspections administrator, and then one victim services program coordinator for legal. And again, a lot of those are grant funded and we've been very aggressive as we've gone after grant monies and, and homeless monies and, and other things to help us staff some of the needs that we have in, in public safety. Again, we're not recommending any positions be eliminated. We're not implementing a hiring freeze. We believe that this is very different from what a lot of other cities along the Wasatch Front are doing. A lot of them are doing hiring freezes and reductions in force. We feel like this is an opportunity for us to fill some vacant positions. Right now we have 24 of them citywide. We have six offers that are out and 14 more we're recruiting. And again, no full-time position layoffs, which we think would be destabilizing and devastating for morale in the city. And for this year, we can offer that zero positions are being eliminated and we're not going to do any layoffs. To give you a brief update on the benefits. So we had an 8% increase in medical insurance and select health with no plan adjustments. So everybody keeps their certain, their current levels. The city will pick up the 8% increase for the Select Value HSA plan and cost share, the increase on the other plans that are out there. Dental insurance and dentist direct, no plan adjustments and no increase. And then all other benefits, vision, life insurance, short-term disability, et cetera. No plan adjustments. We think one of the things that keep people working for the city is the stability of their benefits. We've heard that from a lot of the employee groups and that's something we've looked and, and worked hard to maintain in this. And that's a brief overview. Again, it's an overview. We'll have the budget book out to you all tomorrow. And I know over the next couple of weeks, you will all have a chance to meet with each department director and drill into that. I do want to say, as we've talked about in the last couple of weeks, flexibility and patience are key. As we collect and gather more data, we can make smarter decisions. It might require us to be more nimble and quick than we've traditionally wanted to be in the past. You know, last number of years for me, we could present a budget and it was pretty clear. And we tried to come back with as few of the budget amendments and changes as possible. But I, I think this year it's going to require a different mindset as we go into it. I do also, as I mentioned, believe we're in better shape than many other communities along the Wasatch Front. We had a great blessing for us in the BDO, RDA expiring this year. So we had realized more revenue than a lot of other people were able to realize. And we're not as dependent on retail sales being like, things like car sales and some other things that have really dried up. We, we've got a better balanced economy up here than a lot of others. And I, I want to again, thank our employees and staff for being flexible and willing to work through these amazing times in the last two months. I want to say that Lisa and her team put over 250 hours just since the first part of March, looking at three major revisions to the budget and looking at all the different data that's out there. They did the surveys of the 43 cities along the Wasatch Front, took all of that information, really drilled into that. I mean, they've been exhausted trying to put together what is a conservative budget and to put together these forecasts when we've never been through something like this. So they've done a phenomenal job and just the other city staff that something like this. So they've done a phenomenal job. And just the other city staff that had to completely retool their work environment, go home, try to teach kids, figure out how to balance all of their regular duties in spite of all the new ones that we've added and the information that we've requested. This city staff's done an amazing job. I want to thank all of our department directors for being willing to meet every single morning at 2:30, then at 3:30 for a lot of them to do the PIO calls. It's been an amazing and exhausting two months trying to get all of this figured out and put together. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions?
Chair, I had a lot of questions as the presentation went on, but I kind of feel like they're going to be included in the budget booklet when they pass that along. And it's kind of my responsibility to dig into it and answer a lot of those detailed questions on my own and then bring the questions that those kind of create back in the future meetings. So thanks, Mayor, for that, for that presentation and for everything that the administrative staff has done to prepare us for this time. It's been, I can't imagine how hard it must have been.
I appreciate that. And that's why I said this is kind of a high-level, 30,000-foot overview. And then you will all get in the weeds over the next couple of weeks. So I appreciate your diligence and we'll look forward to having those conversations and answering those questions.
Any other questions?
No, good job. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. And thank you, Mayor Caldwell. So it looks like we need to consider accepting or not accepting. This for review.
Chair, can I ask a quick question? Will you be getting us the, Janine, will you be getting us the budget books tomorrow?
So if you want budget books, we can get you budget books. The staff, most of us have decided to go electronic.
That's all I meant.
Yeah, so they will make it to you available electronically.
Yeah, I don't need a tree cut down. They're pretty big.
Yeah, yeah, they're big.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept for review, the mayor's proposed fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget.
Second.
So the motion by council member Hayer and a second by council member Nadolski to accept the budget for review. And this is a voice vote. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I know Janine will give us, give the public a little bit more of an overview as we come closer to, with all the steps that we go through. But if you look in the pack that you can see, this is just kind of one of the very first steps. And then we'll meet with departments. And then the public will have plenty of opportunity to give us feedback and comments throughout the process. So the next item is the written public comments. And this week, for the week between April 27th and May 4th, there was two public comments, and they were in reference to the Marshall White Center. So I don't believe any council members had comments about those. I don't know if you would like to make any additional comments, Mayor Caldwell. You were on for quite a while, but.
We've read them. You've seen our priorities on that. That's okay.
Great. Any general comments from the council members?
Was that my public comment period?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I do have a few things I wanted to add to that.
Oh, sorry about that.
I appreciated the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We haven't recognized them a lot. And I love that Finau Tatileau said, "We want to bring more happy laughter and fun to Ogden." I think we can all agree with that. And then I would be remiss, my mother was a schoolteacher for 34 years, that we didn't recognize National Teacher Appreciation Week this week as well. Those of us that are homeschooling our kids know what an amazing job they do. And I really think that we should all give our own cyber round of applause to teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers there. And in my opinion, heroes as well at this Teacher Appreciation Week. So let's all say thanks to the people that are taking care of our kids.
Agreed. Any council member, general comments?
I have a few. I just would like to give my thanks to the mayor and the administration and for the employees. I really think they stepped up to the plate during this difficult time. As you see, there's a lot of red ink in our budget. And but because of the administration and the staff and our council and our council staff, I agree with the mayor. I think we're in better positions than most, most communities. I would like to make a suggestion that we look, we had our strategy funding, $325,000 in a fund. I think we ought to maybe look and see if there's anything in the budget that we can assist to use those funds for. I think that'd be a positive entity for us to look at that. I recall back in 2007, 2008 in the Great Recession, and we thought we had a difficult time. But this, the pandemic is not, it overshadows what happened during that period of time. So I'm very appreciative of our health workers. In fact, today is Honor the Nurses Day. So my hat goes off to those individuals. I do have one comment from a citizen, and there's been several about the project that's up on 12th Street, the 185 units. I know the Planning Commission made a approval of that project. But some of the citizens are really concerned about the massive of it and what impact it's going to have in the area. And I don't know, I need to, I know that they need to go before the Board of Adjustments, but I don't know the timetable or what regulations they would have on that. So maybe if someone could answer that, just a brief comment on that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Doug, I've had several of those calls as well. I talked with Greg about it offline a little bit, and he's still on. Maybe we ought to give him just a second, Chair, if that'd be all right, to talk about that issue specifically.
I apologize. Go ahead.
That's all I had.
Sorry. And I was just going to say, if he's prepared to speak to that now, or we could ask him to speak to it the next work session if he would like more time.
Well, I could give you a brief rundown now. We are preparing a fuller document for you to understand and look at. There are some comments in the emails that you've been receiving that are not quite accurate. But the bottom line is that with the 12th Street overlay zone, the Planning Commission's review is limited in terms of they cannot deny a project. All they can do is look at, are there factors to mitigate impacts? And so the meeting held was to determine what mitigating impacts could exist and could be added as a condition to a project that is permitted. That leads to a bigger question about the 12th Street overlay zone and how things have expanded beyond maybe what we thought would really take place with this last project. But the question of the appeal, I understand there's an appeal being made now. They're just reviewing the documents to submit either today or tomorrow to the Board of Zoning Adjustments. That finding will be that there was some air made in the administration of the ordinance, not that people don't want the projects. That's going to be the challenges as they put together their appeal to show errors in the ordinance rather than wanting or not wanting the project there. So that's one of those difficult situations that do take place sometimes when you've got permitted uses or uses where you're trying to get public input to look at mitigating impacts. But the perception is you can just deny the project. So that's the challenge that's out there. We're trying to help educate people and get some of the facts straight of what happened.
Chair, this project's not going to come before the council, is it, Greg?
No, like I said, all it is, is the Planning Commission looking at, because it's over 30 units, any mitigating factors that could be added to the project. But it's a use by right.
Yeah, if I could jump in and talk about that meeting, the Planning Commission has been taken quite a hit from some of the residents that make comments about this. I was on that Zoom meeting and watched that whole meeting and all the public input and the presentations. And with what limitations were placed on the Planning Commission, they did a remarkable job weighing what was, what was theirs to weigh. People wished they'd had more authority to do what they wanted them to do. But, you know, you only have the authority that you do. So I think we have to tip our hat to the Planning Commission. That meeting went till about 11:30 that night. So they earned their, they earned their stipend for that meeting for sure. But, you know, I think we do need to, it should bring up a larger conversation that we have on where high-density housing should be in the, in the city and what it should, how it should function. And I think that's, that's something that's coming up. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Certainly not a conversation that's limited to Ogden City, right? And I think these conversations are happening in many other communities, too. Any other council comments?
Chair, I have a really quick comment. Thank you, Mayor, for all that you did. I know that you have been on a lot of calls because I've been on a lot of the same calls with the league stuff. By the way, the Utah League of Cities and Towns is doing a great job of reaching out to all 249 cities. So if you get a chance to listen to some of their, I think they're almost, I feel like they're daily now, but. Daily calls, they've really had some great information. So if you just want to log on and listen to what they've got going, it's pretty, it's pretty awesome what they're doing and trying to reach out to every member of every 249 elected officials or cities. So anyways, I just wanted to give a shout out to those guys.
Thanks. Any other comments?
I am with the mayor. I'm about tired of Zoom.
True. But I'm really happy we at least get to look at each other. We could just be listening.
That is nice. Yes, it is.
But let's look on the bright side, right? Great. Well, yeah, I just thank everybody so much for your patience with our ongoing electronic meetings. And I know we're in for a little bit of a long haul here as we go through the budget process. But thanks again for your patience and working through it all with us. Guess if anybody would like to adjourn, that would be great.
Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn. A second council member Hayer's motion.
Motion from Councilmember Hayer, a second by Councilmember Nadolski to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thanks for everything, Angela.